You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next, it's April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Evening, everyone. Good evening to the general public. I just want to call our workshop this evening to order. And what we're going to be talking about this evening is the Flock Safety Cameras that we have throughout the city. And we have a representative here in the audience. We also have a representative on Zoom that'll be giving us detailed information on how the Flock system works. And then we'll have questions, comments from council members, and then we'll take any comments or questions from from the general public. And this here is more of a, I mean, I know I've been through these a couple of presentations when this was originally introduced to the city. And I think it's a great system. I think it's working well. But this here is more also a general information session for the new council members that have come on board. So they can learn more about the system and for the general public so that they can learn more and more about the the system and the benefits that they have for us. So to begin with, we'll go with, you want to go first or?
Can I?
Or yeah, Chief Corley?
Yeah.
Chief Corley, yeah, let me just finish, Chief. Yeah, Chief Corley asked for the workshop, so we were able to coordinate it and get it put together. So go ahead, Chief.
So thank you, President, President Ski, and thank you to the council for having us. Again, we're here tonight to again, give you all information about the Flock Safety System that we have. We have what you hear about is you hear about the Falcon, which is our LPR license plate readers, and then the Raven, which is our gunshot detection. Tonight, we have Andrew, who's our representative from Flock that services our area. And then Vaughn, who's from their community engagement department. And so they'll be presenting and giving information about Flock again, like you like you stated, President, that we thought it was imperative that the new council members kind of got the same spiel that the council members that were here when we first got this and make sure you get all your answer, your questions answered. We are, we do know about the system, but I think it's a little bit, it's even better that you hear from the actual representatives for Flock. So I'll let Andrew come up, want to start off, introduce Vaughn and give us going.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the introduction. So I'm here today to really help support Vaughn. So Vaughn is actually a member of our external affairs team. So his job is primarily to help present in front of a council and kind of walk through who Flock is, why Flock is important, as well as the guidelines and the rules that we help build with law enforcement to ensure the system cannot be abused. So I'll let Vaughn go ahead and I'll let him introduce himself. He'll also do a screen share with some slide act to be prepared today for you as well.
Mr. President, can I make one comment?
Sure. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, thank, I want to thank both of you for coming and all of you, Chief, and from the members of the police department. You know, as you're giving this presentation, we'd obviously like to learn how the system works and operates. But as you are making your presentation, also if at the appropriate time, also address some of the privacy concerns that have been raised. Thanks.
Sure. Appreciate that. Vaughn, I'll let you go ahead and take over from here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Can everyone hear me? Hear me? All right. Great. Great. So thank you for that warm introduction, Andrew. Again, I'm Vaughn Rollins, Senior Manager of Government and Community Affairs here at Flock Safety. Again, want to thank everyone for the invitation, City Council and Chief Corley for allowing us to present here. And just give an overview of of what Flock, what we do, our products, as well as addressing some of those concerns that you mentioned, Councilmen, around privacy and transparency and things of that nature and data protection. So that will be addressed here as well. So let me start to share my screen here. Can we all see this?
Yes.
No? All right. Okay, so Flock Safety. So we were created in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen by our founder, Garrett Langley. We founded in Atlanta, Georgia. So Garrett lived, you know, in a community within his HOA. And, you know, what I always like to say is Flock was created from an individual seeing a problem and coming up with a solution, right? Just your average citizen, right? And he was seeing issues throughout his neighborhood with regards to burglaries and with regards to, you know, you have your Amazon packages delivered and all of a sudden they disappearing. And this was not just him. This was his entire, again, this was his entire homeowners association. So what he did was, he said, hey, I'm going back and forth with law enforcement on this and just, you know, we're letting people know. And they just couldn't quite seem to figure out exactly where the problem was rooted. So he took it amongst himself to take his cell phone and he bought other phones as well and put them into plastic packages. So it could block away from any sort of rain and things of that nature and started to put him outside of his house. He also, in addition with that, a huge major part of this, he created a software on the backend to be able to, you know, take that information and receive that information and be able to, you know, look, look through what the information would be providing, the video footage that would be providing. A few days later, a burglary took took place, a car or not burglary, but a car came into his homeowner's association, into his community and attempted to break into someone's home. And then from there, they were able to take that footage. Garrett was able to take that footage and take it to law enforcement and was able to retrieve the license plate number on that, on that vehicle. And was able to ensure that law enforcement had the information that they needed to pursue that individual. So and from there, we've just continuously grown. We're now operating in over, well over five thousand cities across the nation with a slew of products, which you will hear me sort of go through here. But within that, you know, the United States and cities across the country are faced with an issue, particularly law enforcement being faced with an issue, right? I'll move on to the next slide here. And this kind of breaks down that issue for us, right? So there's a paradox, particularly with law enforcement seeing fewer resources and higher sparks in crime in several various areas across the nation. You're seeing fifty percent of agencies reporting more resignations. You're seeing sixty-five percent of agencies reporting having to having too few officers sworn in. You're seeing a twenty-nine percent increase in motor vehicle thefts. And you're also seeing eight point eight percent in violent crime clearance rates. So, you know, what can we do about that, particularly as you're, you're talking about law enforcement agencies, you know, being strapped for cash, right? Not having the resources to be able to do their jobs effectively. And that's where Flock comes in. Flock comes in as almost like an additional additive for your law enforcement, local law enforcement, to be able to use our products and use our system to be able to do their jobs more efficiently. So again, here, what we've observed, the current reality, limited police work resources, as you heard me say, crime is on our eyes all across the nation, dresses needed more than ever at this point. So that's something that we heavily lean on. We lean on collaborating, right? And being solid partners with law enforcement, but also with the communities in which they serve. So that's another major point for us. And you see on the opposite side, what we believe the opportunity should be is engaging the community to support and grow, right? Technology multiplies the force. So you heard me talk about that as well. And then we are able to capture and distribute, you know, objective evidence to the right users. In this case, those users are law enforcement. So here you'll see sort of the evolution, if you will, of our company through, you'll see the evolution through mostly here, what you're looking at our products. The first one is Falcon, which you currently have, which is the license plate reader. Raven is that gunshot detection. Condor is a newer product that we've offered now, which is a live streaming video camera. And then Wing, which is basically like our real time operating system and real sound crime center. Moving right along. So now, how does this technology work? Most of this will mostly focus on Falcon, but if you do have any additional questions about Raven, we can answer those as well. Andrew's there as well, so we can answer those. But I really wanted to focus in on the license plate readers today. So here, Flock Safety provides your police departments with indiscriminate evidence in fixed locations, right? So if you look at this photo that's thrown up on my screen, it's off to the right. This is a photo basically of what the LPR system is pulling, right? So it's one, pulling the license plate. It's two, pulling the color and make of a vehicle. Now, something I really want to point out that's extremely important here. And you'll see a blurb here at the bottom of that photo, it says ethically made. This is something that we constantly want to reiterate is that there's no facial recognition here and there's no people. So if you look at that photo, you won't see a person there at all, right? So that's something that we're extremely transparent and serious about in terms of, you know, ensuring that privacy is key to our messaging and to the products that we create. In addition, you hear me speak a little bit more about that, too. But in addition to that, we're offering real time alerts through the system, right? So the National Crime Information Center, you're also getting Amber Alerts, you're getting Silver Alerts. And then in conjunction with law enforcement, we're able to create custom hot list of potentially license plate, they may have some type of warrant or things of that nature. And this is twenty-four seven coverage, right? So it's capturing objects, objects, objective vehicle data around the clock with multiple, that multiplies your force. And it's infrastructure free as well. So here, this is a really, a really good deep dive into what's being captured from our system, right? So we call it the vehicle, the vehicle fingerprint technology. So what's, what you're capturing is again, the make, the vehicle make, the body type, the color, back racks, top racks, and also the license plate. So temporary tags are included in that and state recognition tags are included in that as well. I don't know if I should stop here for questions or just allow for questions at the end, so I'll keep going. So this is probably what I like to say, one of our most important slides when presenting. It breaks down what we are and what this technology is and what it's not. So what it is, is a license plate recognition system, right? It is not facial recognition by any, by any shape of the matter, right? So we're not taking or capturing any personal identifiable information like DMV records and things of that nature. And we're not using it for traffic enforcement. What it's doing is gathering objects, objective evidence about vehicles and not people. And then there, from there, it's alerting the police of those vehicles as well. Another very important piece here about how data is being shared and what we do with data, right? So the data is not stored for beyond thirty days, right? So that's extremely important, right? So the data that we obtain, it's not stored for thirty days. And another point here, we don't own this data as Flock Safety. Our users own the data. So in this case, Michigan City Police Department owns that data and it's only there for thirty days and it automatically deletes itself. Mitigating risks. So just to talk a bit more about protecting privacy. So again, you heard me say that we don't own data. You see that there in that first bullet point. That's extremely important to us. That thirty day retention period is another extremely important piece. Why is the thirty day retention period important? So there is no federal statute for how long you can retain data information. We came to this thirty day data retention period from having hundreds and thousands of conversations with law enforcement around what is a good enough time to be able to do the investigative work that's needed to be able to ensure that you're, they're doing their jobs efficiently and correctly. And that thirty day period was the period that that was came on, that was came to, come to. And that's more than enough time for law enforcement to be able to collect, collect data, collect information around a potential crime and investigate that potential crime. And that's, that's where we are. Thirty days and for after that thirty day period, it's automatically deleted from the cloud. And again, we don't own that data. The users own that data and have access to that data. And this is taking out the human bias, right, in crime solving by detecting just objective data, right? It's just the vehicles, the make and model, and the license plate numbers of those vehicles. Again, this is not facial recognition software. And another point here, I really want to drive home as well as all this data is being stored securely in the AWS cloud with end to end encryption. We've had no sort of daily leaks or anything like that, never have had to deal with anything like that. And in addition to that, you'll hear me talk about this, too. So when you're using our system, you have to go in, you put your credentials in. You have to give a search reason for why you're, you're searching for whatever information that you're searching for. So like, one, the case, or if it may be a case, it's in that, in that phase, you have to put in the case number. And you have to put in the reason why you're looking for this information. And then from there, let's say, the chief, he wants to figure out why exactly X, X individual was looking into a particular crime. That's all auditable information. So he can pull an audit trail for what was being searched, why it was being searched and who searched it. So that speaks to another important port, point here about our transparency portal. And that's something that we really stand by, right? So this, this allows for PDEs and whoever needs to pull this information to really, you know, rely on insights through, through this transparency portal. So it's measuring return on investment. And it's also promoting the ethical use of this platform, right? So within that, you're able to customize, it's customized for each agency. It displays the various tech, technology policies that have come up, right? So if you have other sample policies and things of that nature for how police departments use this tool, you can, you can go to those and see those as well. This also will store the policy that the current chief Corley has put in place there in Michigan City as well. And this is again, where you can pull that information for those audits as well for, to ensure that you're clear in black and white about how the system is being used and ensuring that it's trustworthy. In addition to that, you can also see other PDEs throughout the region, throughout Miss, Indian, Indiana, Indiana, excuse me, who are also using the system, right? So that allows for seamless integration, right? If someone is fleeing Michigan City, Indiana, and going into another neighborhood, you're able to, to know what police departments in those areas also are using, using Flock and where you can rely on those individuals to help solve whatever crime that may be. And here, here's a list. It's actually probably a few more since we've last created this list. But these, this is a list of current Indiana users currently. So various PDEs either at the county level, state level, of course, and other cities and villages throughout Indiana who are current users as well. This is always good to see just to gives you a, gives you an idea of, you know, all the other cities that, you know, are within the state who are using, using our products. And here, this is something we, we always like to really reiterate as well, right? We are pointing to case studies here where Flock has been used to solve crimes, right? Rather our LPR systems or rather our gunshot, gunshot detection, or in this case, both. So I'll read this to you and we can share more about this, too, after more case studies, after I wrap up here and after questions. But this was really a very impactful story where our system was used to solve a crime. So Michigan City's Police Department Raven Audio Detection Device alerted officers to gunshots. And witnesses on the scene provided a description of a vehicle the suspect fled in. Officers curried nearby Flock Safety LPRs identifying the vehicle that matched the description that was in the area at the time of the gunshots. They located the suspect's vehicle and initiated a traffic stop. After further investigations, officers searched the vehicle and discovered a loaded stolen handgun. They arrested three suspects who are charged with a variety of crimes, including theft of a firearm. So this is just one instance of that, right? Here's another. This case is, it was a mother whose child was lost. And it's almost, almost to the extent of an Amber Alert. So and the child is in the car as they're still in the vehicle. The stolen vehicle was found and suspects taken into custody. A six thirty and the child was dropped off at that construction site earlier that day. So these are just more of these examples. We can share out, again, we can share more of these with you as well as case studies. This was in Indianapolis. This one was Evansville, Indiana as well. So, you know, this is something that we're extremely, you know, excited just to be able to do this type of work, to have this type of lasting impact on the community. And we want to be able to continue to do that, right? So we want to be able to provide the service. We want to be able to ensure that we're working with the community and being clear about the technology and the products that we have and being able to, you know, clearly articulate that and answer any questions that you may have around those issues. And this is another issue. So that was all I had. Would love to take questions, follow up questions here. And again, I can follow up and ensure that you all receive this presentation. So you can share it and read it and provide any other insights that you may have questions to.
Yeah, Vaughn, thank you very much for that presentation. Very enlightening, very detailed. And yeah, that was very good. And if any of the council members, I guess you could send it to, I don't know who you want to send it to here in the city, but you could, yeah.
I'd give it to you.
Okay, yeah, Chief Corley said that he would give us all a presentation of what we have here. So are there any questions from council members of Vaughn? Councilman Beatty, go ahead.
One of your slides had commercial and private users mentioned, I guess I need to ask you. Where's that information stored and is there any? Does that give them access to anything that the police department have?
No, no. So in commercial and privatized spaces, they basically share that information with their information with law enforcement, not the other way around.
Okay, so it's a one way street?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman Carl.
I think Councilman leaves first. You want to go ahead first?
Sure. I have a few questions. Um, so you showed us a slide of Indiana and how many communities in Indiana have this system? I was curious how many communities in the country have them? And is this international or is this only in the United States?
So currently we're over, it's only in the United States currently. Although we do have some employees throughout Europe, newer employees. But currently we are over about five thousand plus cities and communities throughout the country.
And then what if police need that data after the thirty days? I know you said the police departments themselves could control that data. So what if you need some of that data later on?
They're, so they're able to save information if they need to go back to it. So let's say they're looking at, they have a few different vehicle types. They can save it and then keep that for their, for their further investigation. But after the thirty days, it's deleted.
Okay. And then on one of the sides, it mentioned filters and you're able to adjust for the different departments' needs. So you also said that there, this is not used for traffic violations. So I'm wondering if there are filters available so that certain departments could use it for traffic violations or XYZ that's not advertised generally, or are those filters not even available?
Those filters aren't available, but see, that, that speaks more towards policy language and legislative language. So that we typically leave up to cities to control. So in this case, Officer Corley would be able to draft his, his policy with language potentially to say, hey, we want to be able to use a system to help with that. That's not something that we do internally in the company of Flock. But there could be language at the city level created to say, hey, we want to, you know, use these systems to help better enforce, you know, traffic violations and things of that nature. But it wouldn't be like, we don't do like, you know, red light cameras and things of that nature. That's, that's not what we do here. So it still wouldn't be quite what you see with, when you think about red light cameras and things of that nature. It would be more or less, you know, a car getting into an accident, going through a, you know, a four way street or something like that. And being able to say, hey, this car sped through that intersection and now we can use that information to further inform the crime that was committed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. Now, first one is like in Michigan City, how many cameras do we have like this? Like, is it the whole city covered with this?
Thirty.
Thirty cameras? Okay, all right. So you have used it in the most important locations and intersections. Okay. The second thing I wanted to ask you was, in terms of privacy concerns, are there any pending legal actions anywhere in the country about privacy related concerns?
Not that I know of, but I can definitely get back to you on that.
Okay. And then in terms of your business model, so it is, is it like we buy it in the beginning and then there is like a service contract every year? Is that how that works?
It's basically like a subscription service. So, correct. So we provide the infrastructure, we take care of the infrastructure and all that. And the subscription service is what, what is, what is being costed.
Have there been any studies done like in cities or towns where the Flock system is being used and compare it with cities and towns where it is not being used? And has there been any significant improvement in, in detecting crime and also getting, getting, arresting the perpetrators of those crimes?
Yeah, so that's actually in the works. That's in the works. So I do have a case study that can speak to that. It's based out of San Diego, California. So I can share that with you with, along with the package that I'm sending to chief. And you can give that a read and follow up with any additional questions that you may have about that. But we are working on a larger sort of impact study that looks at the comparison and analysis between cities that don't have and cities that do. And then what, you know, what we can do to sort of look at that, that gray area. So, so that is in the works, but there is a case study that somewhat does that. But I don't think it's, I don't think it dives quietly as deeply as you're looking to, but I will share that with you as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Beatty?
I did meet earlier this year with the chief and his staff, and I was very impressed with this program. But I didn't know the questions I should have asked back then. And since then, I've been thinking about them. I'm a little confused about how exactly this thing works. I know we had a major event where we were able to identify a city, or I think a car from Colorado or something. So it was, it came into Michigan City and it was spotted by Falcon. And did, did they get a cue then somewhere in the police station that this is a, a car that they should be interested in?
Chief, would you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Yeah. So what, so what happens is, as Vaughn had alluded to, is that we get alerts. And so what happens is with Flock, every officer has the, the capability of getting alerts on their laptops. We also have a capability of getting on our phones also. So what happens is that license plate for that vehicle is put into Flock and it's on a hot list, which we have access to. And so when it goes through one of our cameras, it, the alert goes out that it's a stolen vehicle. And then it goes out to our officers.
And then it goes out to our officers.
You know, right then?
Yeah, it's, it, it, so we know right then that it's, it's a stolen vehicle, but then we also always verify it. So I get the alert, um, and then what it does, give me a license plate, then I could run the license plate. Through our dispatcher or in my car to verify that it's stolen. And then initiate the traffic stop.
So does that mean then that? The, the piece, the, that car, the people in that car. Were guilty of doing something they shouldn't have been doing within the last thirty days? That's why that data was still there? Or does that information even in that car disappear after thirty days?
So the, the hot list, um, well, so what it will, so it's in NCIC. I'm trying to explain this the best way again. Um, it's in NCIC and so as long as it's in NCIC. It's that, it's still there, but what, what, what leaves that goes away are those things that are not. Active alerts in NCIC. So it's not in, so for instance, if, um, if, let me give you an instance, if, so if we got a shooting, alright. Shots fired, um, and the homeowner who sees it says, it's a black vehicle with. License plate LBJ in it, okay? So LBJ five-five-six, okay? So LBJ five-five-six is not in NCIC already. As for either being, uh, somebody with a warrant or somebody with a suspended license or. Those type of things or a stolen vehicle, it's not in NCIC already. So NCIC has its own records. And so Flock is tied to NCIC. And so that stuff is, is determined by NCIC. What, what we don't have access to is that LBJ five-five-five might have went by a Flock camera. But if we don't find it within the thirty days, that information is gone.
Okay.
So whatever the cameras are picking up, their cells outside of the alerts. Then that information is what is gone in thirty days.
Okay, got it.
Chief, what does NCIC, what is the acronym?
National Crime Information Center. It's, 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 uh. The federal database that has, uh, stolen vehicles, wanted individuals, uh. Stolen articles, that's all stored in that.
Councilwoman Lee?
Um, you mentioned that we have, uh, thirty cameras currently in Michigan City. Um, is that how many we should have for a city our size or is it recommended that we have more? Or is that how many we need and we got thirty right up front, or are we looking to get more in the future?
Um, thirty was the number that we came to that at the time that was feasible for what we were able to obtain with the monies that we had. Um, a city our size, if you look at a city comparable to us, um. Again, I don't know though, we didn't get any recommendation what we should have. If, if, I mean, if you, if you ask us, there, there are still areas that we could use. More additional cameras in, um, if, you know, my, if, if based on my recommendation. A hundred cameras is what we should have. So. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, again, just the thirty cameras, I think it, it sounds like a lot. Uh, just one thing I think is important that they're, uh, they're directional. So to cover like an intersection, say four twenty-one and twenty, right? Big intersection, we need four cameras in that direct, in, in that. One intersection to cover those, so they go quickly. You know, some of the main thoroughfares, essentially I would say we've built a fence around the Michigan City and then we have some obviously. Strategically placed, you know, regarding calls for service and whatnot, you know, so. Again, I think, you know, like Chief Corley said, we could probably easily put a hundred. It probably wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't say it's enough. I'm sure there'd be others' opinions, you know, otherwise. Um, but again, just keep in mind, like thirty goes quick when we start talking about some major intersections or whatnot. You know, we want to, uh, be able to cover those.
And the Raven, how many do we have out there?
So the Raven goes by square miles, so that's, uh, again, a recommendation, that would be a recommendation from Flock. They just. Essentially, we have four square miles, so they. They come up with the planning and say, hey, this is how many you need to cover your demographic or your, uh. Uh, what am I looking for there? Go ahead. I'm sure you got something better there.
So on the first part, we are looking to put Falcon, the LPR, out into an area. One thing that we actually do is we actually sit down with law enforcement. We actually look at crime data. We look at historical data of where criminals are coming from. And so we actually, when we build these maps, we use historical data to help kind of guide us of where we need to be placing cameras and what the appropriate amount is. Uh, when it comes to Raven, it goes by a square mile or quarter square mile radiuses. We actually have a team of engineers who, based on buildings, based on trees, based on space. That will decide on how many devices will go to provide them an accurate, uh, detail of where that shot is being fired. So we have about a ninety feet, ninety-foot accuracy of a shot being fired within sixty seconds. And each area, each, each, uh, block will have a different number of devices based on houses, based on buildings. Um, you get to a downtown city where there's a lot of larger buildings, probably going to need more devices versus a more wide open area. Because we can triangulate much more accurately.
Councilman Cora?
Yeah, the other question I had was, is LaPorte County using this, the county and like the city of LaPorte and other communities in our county?
Yes, we actually just had a case, uh, that was just shared this morning. Um, from LaPorte County where they had a hit and run that occurred on I think the twenty-second of April. Uh, where an individual was found hit by a car, uh, down the side of the road. And they actually used Flock, um, they were able to use Porter County Sheriff's Office cameras. To actually pinpoint that vehicle timeframe of coming through. Uh, they actually had a suspect vehicle and they were able to make the apprehension and arrest that individual within thirty-six hours. And that individual admitted to the crime. Um, so that just happened in the county within.
Simply yes.
Two days, uh, so, yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Beatry?
Um, so I, I want to give you a hypothetical to think, well, first of all, one thing I think this thing is really good at. Is so many times there's a crime committed in Michigan City and there are tons of people around, but nobody says a word. And you guys show, and then they all complain that you haven't solved the crime, but no one's willing to give you the information you need. And this, this gives you information. So the hypothetical is, let's say that Raven. Identify some gunshots and, and you look at the Falcon then to see cars that were leaving away from there. And there's say five cars and you do your, do diligence, do diligence and. Determine that two of those cars might be involved in this thing. Uh, the other three then, do they just disappear in thirty days and that's it? But the two that you're interested in, you get to keep and do further work on.
Yeah, so what happens though, like, so they were in thirty days, that information would disappear. The two that we were, we need, we could save. We didn't save that, you know what I'm saying? And so, but if we didn't save it, that also would disappear in thirty days. So basically, what, what it, you don't see example, what will happen on our screen, what we see is the license plate, a description of the vehicle. Um, and we will save that information into like a, a, a database or onto your computer or whatever.
Councilman Davy? So in other words, you will save anybody or any car, put whatever that's in an active investigation, so to speak. The others fall out of the.
Yeah, falls out, yeah. And, and again, I hope I explained the NCIC part. NCIC is, we don't have no control over that one, but the stuff that the cameras pick up that is not connected to. Is what we have control over and that's what the thirty days.
Yeah, I, I think what it reaffirms for me is, as long you can drive where you want to drive your car. And if, if something happened that shouldn't have happened, but you weren't a part of it.
Right.
No harm, no foul.
Right. And, and what I think, uh, also Vaughn or Andrew can kind of piggyback on is, I know there's a lot of privacy. Issues here, but it's not like, so like, unless I'm getting alerts. I, I don't see what's going on in Flock unless we're getting alerts. If I want to search it, I have to put in. A case report and a reason, and again, there's an audit trail to say why. So if somebody's not using Flock according to our policies. Then they'll be reprimanded for that and we can, we can see that because they have to put their reasoning in and then have to tie up with a case.
That's right. So it's not like someone is just from the police force is just watching this twenty-four seven. Um, so that's, that's not taking place. And again, I just want to help clear up some of the infra, questions about the, uh, the thirty days and the NCIC and the Flock retention. So NCIC, right, is the National Crime Information Center. So when we take a report reference, just a stolen article. Right? We enter it into what, whatever that may be, a vehicle, a phone, anything that we have a serial number on. Or a, a self-applied number, maybe you put your initials on all your tools and it's identified, right? So as the police department, we submit requests, uh, paperwork to, um, our dispatchers. Who can enter those into NCIC, right? And so as long as that item is stolen, it will remain in NCIC. Okay, when we recover stolen items, a vehicle, tools, whatever it may be. When we recover those, then we have to have our dispatchers remove them from NCIC. So, uh, the partnership with Flock, obviously, and, and the crime, or National Crime Information Center. So as long as something is in NCIC, as stolen, missing, whatever it may be. Long, there's obviously criteria to enter into NCIC. As long as it's in NCIC. And I have my NCIC alerts on, I'm going to receive those alerts through Flock. Okay, and then if I don't have the alerts on, and again, if I, I may receive alerts for NCIC alerts through Flock. But if I don't download that data needed for my investigation, it's gone. So I, I, I hope that just kind of clears up some of that stuff. So again, hopefully, again, NCIC, like you said, is its own little entity. And again, as long as we put it into NCIC, it stays in there until a law enforcement official removes it from there. So the Flock data just rolls off after thirty days unless we download, uh, that information pertinent to an investigation.
Okay, I have a couple, couple of questions. Number one, what's the cost of the Falcon camera? Or this, yeah.
Yep.
The pole camera, the whole unit?
So Falcons are a three thousand dollar a year cost. It's an annual subscription, um, and what that.
For one camera?
One camera, correct.
Okay.
And then we maintain, we take.
And how much is the cost to purchase that camera?
So three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, and then, uh, Raven?
So Raven is based on the radius, so a quarter mile, half mile and full mile are different costs. Uh, quarter mile is twelve thousand five hundred, half mile is twenty thousand, and then a full mile is thirty-five thousand, so it's.
Can you run, run that?
Yep.
One more time?
Quarter.
Quarter miles, what?
Twelve thousand five hundred. Half is twenty. And then a full is thirty-five.
Okay.
Again, yeah, we maintain all devices, so as something breaks. As technology gets outdated, we all know technology is pacing at such a fast scale. That's kind of the reason why Flock has the subscription model is what we learned was. There were PDs that were buying half a million dollars in an LPR product and then in three years. It was no longer viable, technology had outpaced it. So that's one thing that we do is as technology progresses. As a new lens, for example, comes out, we actually go out and replace those for all of our agencies for free.
Can you, uh, very, what, what is?
Doctor Cora?
I'm sorry.
I'm just going to ask, LPR what it stands for?
LPR, license plate reader.
Okay, Andrew, do you have any information that you'd like to add that Vaughn hasn't added already?
No, I, I think it continually has been a extremely powerful tool for, for Michigan City and keeping the community safe. I know. I've actually been with Flock now for not even a year, um, about nine months at this point. And just not having a law enforcement background before I joined the organization. Uh, it's been an eye-opening resource for me, just seeing the, the good that it does throughout the state. Seeing the Amber Alerts that have been solved. Um, we had one in Southern Indiana down in Warwick County last year. Where was a child abducted from Oklahoma. And it gotten all the way to Southern Indiana before a Flock Amber Alert alerted Warwick County Sheriff's Office to bring in three kids home. And that for me is why I joined Flock, is that message, is that going out there and returning those kids home to their families? And helping keep great communities safe ultimately. Crime is everywhere. But we need to have tools for law enforcement to allow them to, you know, ultimately try to eliminate crime and not have it be. Any sort of issue that we're facing on a daily basis.
Okay, any other, uh, I just have one, just one more comment, cause you brought up the, uh, situation. With that individual getting the hit and run on Highway six, right? Yeah, cause I think I read that in the paper yesterday, I think it was yesterday's edition. Yeah, and here we are. A day later and they solve the, uh, solve the hit and run. That's, that, to me, that's pretty impressive, yeah. Very impressive. And you also caught the individual, whether, you know, whatever time of day that that happened, I don't know. Maybe he didn't even see the individual walking on the side of the road or, you know, maybe he did. I don't know what the situation was, but just to. Find it, find the person that was involved with it, brings that to a, uh, a close for the, uh. Policing Department staff to chase him down and spend time doing that. Are there any comments from the public?
I'll just add to that real quick, uh, just because we're talking about that recent case. Um, with the, the county, the sheriff's department just solved the, uh, fatal accident. Uh, I can rest assured, had we had these cameras in place. Uh, in which the incident, which, uh, the Tara Stevens. Uh, hit and run accident out of Creekside Bar and Grill, had we have the current cameras that we have in place right now. I can probably say a hundred percent that we would probably identify the suspect vehicle in that case. So.
I'm sorry, Dan, I'm going to quit.
Councilman Davy, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you. And I remember when this whole thing started. I was like in the, in the, at the very beginning, uh, of this. And I remember the, the phrase or the term being what activated cameras were, gunshots. You know, gunshots, I think it's a tire screeching and broken glass. Am I still accurate on that?
On the gunshot side, uh, so gunshot, yes. Tire screeching was just released for like street, the legal street takeovers, things like that. Uh, broken glass is not something that we have yet, uh, when it comes to Raven, but that's something that we are working on trying to do as we. As again, we see more crime happening, we see people breaking into vehicles. Our goal is to help make the technology there for law enforcement to use effectively.
And then, uh, again, uh, with the, with the sound, I know it was able to detect between fireworks. And gunshots. And I, I'm just kind of recalling all of this, this is putting information out there for everybody that may be listening. And I have plenty more, I could probably go for another half hour or so, but I'll let you guys finish up.
When did our contract start with Michigan City?
Uh, January of twenty twenty-three is when, um, I think we actually signed the contract in twenty twenty-two, but. Installation didn't start into January twenty twenty-three and installation started with the Falcons first. And then we got the Ravens installed that summer, like around late June. And a lot of that had to deal with, uh, um, the delay on that was weather. Um, and then we were also trying to work with, um, NIPSCO to use their poles for that and so. There was a big, um, conversation there that spanned it too long and then finally we were like, look, we need this. And so Flock then put them up on their own poles.
And how long is our current contract?
Um, it's year by year.
Year by year?
Yes, yep.
Councilman Cora?
You know, it's a hypothetical question for you. When potential people who have propensity to commit crimes, when they know that there's a Flock system in place. Does that act as a deterrence?
But I'll also let Vaughn answer that. I know he has some more data, but we actually, um, are working on a case study for showing that. I think one thing that I've, so I actually, there's been a Flock camera outside of my neighborhood where I live in Indiana. And I didn't realize it was there until I worked for Flock and then all of a sudden I noticed it existing. Um, but a lot of times like a criminal, they, they may not know they're there ultimately. Um, but I think something that I was talking with Chief Corley about earlier is, they've actually noticed that individuals who are coming into Michigan City. Are now actively trying to find ways to not go past the Flock camera, because they know if they go past that Flock camera. Michigan City is going to be alerted to them. And I think that's a powerful tool. Michigan City is going to be alerted to them, and I think that's a powerful tool that now. An individual who wants to come into the city to commit a crime is now having to make a much more difficult route to try to get in to make that crime. And I think that's a pretty impactful thing that Flock is able to help do. Uh and I'll let Von go ahead and add add some more as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I think the answer to your question is yes. Um. Speaking of, you know, sort of case studies, um you'll see in the in the package that I send over about San Diego that kind of speaks to that, and I think. That's what we really, we're really seeing in terms of uh, you know, how how Flock is impacting overall crime data. Right, um when you look at a place like the San uh San Diego case study. You'll see that since Flock, it's it has gone down, so I think that that deterrent. Uh plays a major part in why we're seeing crimes go down. Um and we want to continue to do that, right? So um but yeah, that that this this case study that I'm sending over um that I hope you read, uh we'll. We'll go into a bit more depth into that, but I I do think that just to strictly answer your question. Yes, it it does play as a deterrent for uh nefarious individuals who are coming into communities looking to uh commit crimes.
I have a question for you, Von. So the city of Chicago, if I understand it right, and I haven't followed it all that close, do they have Flock? Cameras over there?
So I'm actually based in Chicago, um and no.
Mayor of Chicago is trying to get rid of them, correct? Is that, that, I believe that's what I've heard.
They have a company called ShotSpotter, or we have a company called ShotSpotter. Um and they're in contract negotiations and things of that nature. We are in, you know, basically all of the surrounding communities of Chicago. So Cook County, um and other major counties surrounding it. Um we'll see what happens, but uh currently they have ShotSpotter.
Okay, so that's all a different company.
Correct.
Yeah, all right, okay, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Comments from the public?
Uh Scott Melon to our Kenwood Place. First of all, I'd like to thank the uh police department, the chiefs, and the council for having this workshop. I really appreciate it. Um. Most of our, clearly, this is a powerful tool for the police, nobody's arguing that. But even in this conversation, we've already heard the potential for how it could be expanded over time. Councilwoman Lee asked, could it be used for other traffic infractions, for example? That's exactly the kind of Orwellian overreach I never want to see. Part of my rights are to break the rules from time to time. I'm not talking about committing major crime, but if I want to roll a stoplight or a stop sign, that's between me and them. Well. I think murders, murder and carjackings and shooting guns is quite a bit different than than civil, than simple traffic violations. Okay? Um as far as the cost of the system. We signed a two-year contract that's due for renewal this September, I believe. I don't have it with me. The first year cost to the city was a hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The annual renewal is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Of the hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars of that exactly is for the Raven system. So the shot detection is uh more expensive than the cameras. Um. Additionally, the license plate readers, in addition to the Falcon system, the police also have license plate readers on most of their patrol cars. Which apparently is a different system. Doesn't seem to be part of Falcon. The license plate readers on patrol cars. Uh, okay, okay. And since all these reports have to be followed up by police, there's no automatic ticketing or anything. They all have to be followed up by police. The ones on the squad cars make sense. They're right there when they pass pass the plate. There's also some concerns about, you know, a wanted plate. Some, a plate that's hot on the hot list on the National NCIS CIS list doesn't drop ever. It's hot, it's on the hot list. It's only those of us that are have done nothing wrong, whose data is dropped in thirty days. And that's one of my big arguments here. The ACLU's best practices approach is a three-minute drop. Second best approach is a three-day drop. The worst example is a thirty-day drop. That's a lot of data to be collected. And in today's day and age, this data can be used against us. For example, there are some counties in Texas who have made it illegal to use the public roads. To help a woman access certain types of healthcare. This system helps enforce that. This database can be subpoenaed. That is one of the authorized uses of the database. If you have thirty days of data, it can be subpoenaed. Then your movements, your cars' movements can be mapped. This is the kind of thing we have to be careful of. This sounds good when you're hearing from professional salespeople and the police department. I'm the only person here so far for months speaking out about civil rights and the potential for abuse. And I think there might have been some semantic gymnastics by Mr. Vaughn. Because their license. Their standard license says. The government, the customer government agency hereby grants Flock a non-exclusive worldwide perpetual royalty-free right and license during and after the service term. Uh to the footage. It's not theirs. We share our database with those five thousand other communities. That's how the out-of-state people were caught. The data from Colorado was shared, so came up on our list. It gets complicated. But the data is not exclusive to us, it is shared. Um. And there have been other examples where bad data has led to bad results, you know, garbage in, garbage out. It turns out rental car agencies have a bad habit of reporting their properly rented vehicles as stolen. And when that plate comes across a patrol officer, they see it as a stolen plate. That is not a typical traffic stop anymore. That's what's considered a felony stop. Is that the right word?
Could be, yeah. Every circumstance is different.
That's where they scream at you from behind their car, get out of your car. They don't ask for your driver's license. There are many videos of terrified families, terrified people. Who have done nothing wrong, but the system alerted on them. Now, that's a mistake. You know, but mistakes happen. You know, the road to. The road to HE double hockey sticks is paved with good intentions. I know there's good intentions here, but again, I fear the overreach, and once again, and certainly creep. Creep of the use of the system. And I don't see any problem with us using the recommended best practices. Their standard contract has a thirty-day data. We can modify that to one of these suggested phrases. Same thing with sharing the data. We don't have to share the data. You know, that's that's a conversation to have. I care more about the thirty-day data retention period for all of us, again. The police can always come up with a reason to need to search our activities and have an authorized use to look for it. And often this is. In different communities, this can be used for people's political activities, religious beliefs, or medical care. And we are in a restrictive state as it comes to women's healthcare. And I think this is a real thing I would ask the council to consider protecting the citizens of Michigan City from. I don't want my data being searched for thirty days. I don't want them knowing when I go to Chicago. I don't think it's any of their business. The power of the state is vast. The police represent the power of the state. And once the state has a power, they very rarely give it up. Please protect us from this type of Orwellian octopus of things they shouldn't have any business in knowing. If a plate, if if somebody has a warrant for their arrest, it's attached to the license plate. It goes on the hot list. If the car is reported in the hit and run or stolen, it's on the hot list. It doesn't drop after thirty days. It will alert when it goes by these cameras. There's no reason to save all of our travels for thirty days. Thank you very much for, again, having this meeting. I really appreciate it, and I I really hope you take this into consideration.
Thank you, Scott. Oh, chief?
Need my public comment time? Um do two things. If we had a three-minute um retention period, the case you just heard would have never been solved. But their body on a roll, none of that, in three minutes, because that information would be gone, all right? Um another thing, NCIC is there no matter what. You know what I'm saying, in one of people, that's NCIC, that's not us. A regular, average-day person has nothing to fear with Flock. We're not searching, looking for your everyday, regular person, not committing crimes. That's not what we're looking for. And we have oversight. There's oversight for everything. Is anything in this in this world perfect? If you, the ACLU, anybody can come up with that, then let us know. There's nothing's perfect, but there's always oversight. In Flock, we have oversight to make sure it's not abused and is not used for those things. Also, another thing. Is that we share data, well, people share data with us. And again, that's how we're able to um solve crimes. And again, we are not searching for everyday citizens that are not breaking laws or committing crimes. We're looking for those that are committing crimes, so. We're not out here, you know, trying to take away anybody's rights or doing anything. Not sure what they do in Texas, but I just want to let you know, we're in Indiana, we're in Michigan City. Um again, some of the things that if we have to go over, the the um question that Councilman Lee asked about traffic violations, we're not looking for that, we're not doing that, but if that was something, you all would have to approve that again. Oversight, that's what you all are here for, that's what our administration is here for. And so we're making sure that it's being used responsibly and to eliminate crime in our neighborhood or our community.
Dr. Cora, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for the chief. Do you have any system within the police department? Like where you meet every six months or a year to just review? And see that it is being used for the right things and it is not being used for the things that Mr. Madden was talking about. Is there like an internal uh like a quality control or a a review once every six months or a year, just to make sure that it's being used properly?
And and so we, what we do is we have a group of administr, people who have administrative uh capabilities or roles. Who are able to look at any, any type of violations like that that come up, we're able to do that. Right, yeah.
Councilwoman Lee?
Um so as um Scott brought up about um abortion access in other states. Um as he was saying, um this data could be used against people going to different states um for, to access abortions where it's illegal in their own state, um. It looked like you had something to say for that. Is Flock, does Flock share that data, or does it not with law enforcement agencies for that specific person, purpose?
So we do not, so one thing you're actually able to see on Michigan City PD's transparency portal is, A, who they share access with. So you can actually see that as public-facing officials. Um so Illinois recently, or last year, passed some laws and regulations around LPR uh access specifically for that reason. So in order for Michigan City to actually use any LPR in Illinois, they actually had to sign off in an agreement consenting that they would not use it for that reason. Um so when things like that in other states do occur, we actually work with state governing bodies to help ensure that if Michigan City wants to use an LPR in Illinois, that they're following the laws of that state. Um and vice versa, if Indiana passes a law, we're going to make sure that agencies outside of the state are pass, are following those same same rules. Uh State of Kentucky recently actually passed a law for thirty-day policy. Um so thirty days is actually a Kentucky state law now for LPR data. Um Indiana as a state has not passed that, but there is a world where that does happen in the future. Um it could. Um so that's the state that borders Indiana, who actually is already using a thirty-day policy, for example, as a statewide rule. Um but that's, so that Flock is very uh very open on how we work through that. And when states do pass rules and laws regarding LPR usage in that sense, we make sure to follow those and hold our agencies accountable to following them as well.
So if Texas asked. Illinois for data on Texans that drove there. What would that look like?
So Texas would have to, A, sign that consent form, saying that they are not using it for that purpose. And then if they were to break that law, then there's. Then they're going to be dealing with issues with their state and Illinois state law. Um so if they go to choose to break that law, then they're breaking laws well beyond what Flock can hold them to, then they're breaking Illinois state law. Um so at that point, the state of Illinois can hold them accountable. Um and that's one thing that's also great is it's not just an internal audit. So let's say South Bend PD is using Michigan City's block cameras. Michigan City can actually audit who from South Bend was using it. So it's not just an internal audit, it's also an external audit of what other law enforcement agencies are using your cameras. Not just South Bend PD, but what user, what case number, and what time they were using it for. So we both built both the internal and the external audit, which before Flock did not frankly exist in in LPR technology.
Okay, and then um with the, um I asked about filters adjustable for um traffic violations. I actually asked that uh because you mentioned something about it in a previous meeting. Um and so I wanted to assure you that that wasn't the case here, and so they confirmed that. So if that did become available in the future. We would, would we have to approve that at the council?
Yes.
In order to have the police department make that adjustment?
Correct, so Michigan City already has an LPR policy of their acceptable uses. So if there was an additional feature that Flock released, um it would be against their policy to use that without asking council for permission and getting that approved, um so.
Thanks.
Councilman Beatrice? I think the thing that's important for the public to understand, the people who are watching this presentation and that are here now. The key to this thing is something that Scott Mellon said. He doesn't want the police to know when he goes to Chicago, and he doesn't want them to know what church he attends on Sunday. But the fact is, they don't know. They have no reason to know, and they they're not looking for that. The only, the only way he's going to be keyed is if he's going to Chicago in a stolen car, or if he's committed a crime. So the the public, you're going to hear a lot of things from people who don't like this flock and sort through the stuff that's just not true. If you're driving your car wherever you want to drive it, and you haven't committed any crimes. The police have no idea that you're even there.
Exactly, no, a hundred percent accurate, and at the same time, I don't think Michigan City PD or really any PD currently has the time to sit there and look through LPR information, like they're busy actually solving legitimate crimes. They don't have time to go sit around and look at a computer and see where this individual was. Law enforcement right now, as we discussed earlier, like they're understaffed in a lot of places. Crime is up. They don't have time to sit and look at a computer screen all day and see, oh, where did a bill go? That's just not feasible. It's not realistic to what the world we live in now is. There's. That just, it doesn't, yeah, if there was a million police officers from Michigan City PD. Great, they they'd have an officer on every corner, um but that's not the world we live in sadly, where they can have that, so.
Again, thank you, I just wanted to just talk about some of the traffic enforcement stuff. So last July first, uh twenty twenty-three, the state of Indiana passed that they can now use like traffic enforcement cameras. Uh we currently do not have any. Flock system does not support, you know, that current here in Michigan City. Um so again, they did pass a law that would allow traffic enforcement, your red light cameras, speed cameras, stuff like that, that you see in some other states. Uh that was passed again last July, but we don't have any of that stuff here.
Any other comments from the council? Scott, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up. Scott Melon to our Kenwood Place. Thirty cameras is a lot. Um every major s- uh road into our city is is covered, twelve, twenty, ninety-four. Or four twenty-one leading to ninety-four. It's pretty hard to get in and out of town without being picked up on this. I have to pass three of these cameras to come here, and I live in the center of town. I live at Cool Spring in Franklin. Mm hmm. And I passed three of these cameras. I think we have a pretty good density of them. Um that was only one of the things I wanted to say. Oh, darn it. Um. No. It's gone. Um oh. I might have antagonized the police chief tonight. Nobody's sitting there watching license plates pinging. It's when there's a reason to search for somebody's plate. Hey, I'm mad at Scott. I'm sure police come up with a reason why. I'm sure police come up with a reason why, a legitimate reason to search for my plate. That's why the data is there, and because that database is there, it can be subpoenaed by out-of-state entities. That's the advantage of a shorter database. Maybe three minutes is too short. The one, the, the one that Chief Corley, uh, just got up to say was, uh, a three-day hold would have worked, or a seven-day. Thirty days is actually a lot of data to maintain when there's no need for it. Like you say, nobody's just there watching the screen saying, where, where are they now? It's using modern mapping software and a trumped-up reason to run a plate to find out a person's movements and activities. I don't think we have that kind of police department doing that. But we have to protect ourselves against other departments. Those in Lake County, you might get a sheriff there that has a different take on women's healthcare and wants to know when you're transiting his town or his county. We have to protect for the bad things to happen. I don't think that's happening here. I think we have a great police department, actually, as witnessed by some recent excellent things they did, that I think there'll be some awards coming out at the next, uh, accountability meeting. Um, but again, it's protecting us against creep, you know, creep and overreach, because once they get something, it's never given back. And there are trade-offs. This is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. We do have a fully staffed force, or just about, for the first time in years. Um, we could afford three more, or maybe we could get by with three less. That's about the cost of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand a year, isn't it? Or we could fix the cemeteries. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Dabney?
And, uh, just to address the comment that thirty, uh, cameras is a lot. And I've had personal, um, where I've actually told the chief of police, I want one in my front yard. Uh, couple of years back, couple summers back, I had two cars stopping the intersection in front of my house, shooting at each other. Somebody jumped out the car, ran around the side of my house, a guy was shooting at him, and they shot bullets into my house as I laid on my bed about fifteen feet away from it. Um, and I know of other places in the city that have been with innocent bystanders and how they're getting shot up and things like that. So in my mind, I'm looking for the hundred, uh, not the thirty. So, and then to address, and I, I, I don't want to speak for the police department, but at this time, you know, we're not fully staffed with numbers of cops on the streets. You know, we have people in the academy and things of that sort. So the last time we talked about it, there's about eighty-three percent or so of, of the staff that's out there on the streets right now. Uh, so we're not fully staffed to the eighty-four that we've been budgeted for. So I just wanted to correct that.
Okay. Gentlemen, we're done, okay? Anyway, uh, any other comments by the council? Scott, I want to thank, I mean, Andrew, I want to thank you. Vaughn, I want to thank you for participating. Chief Corley, I want to thank you and Chief, uh, Forker for getting ahold of me and putting this, uh, workshop together. I think it's been very beneficial to the, uh, to the new council members and the veteran council members. It's always good to get a refresher course on this. And to the, uh, to the general public, so they get more informed, you know, about this. Uh, I have no issues with this system, otherwise I would not have originally voted for it when we did that. And, uh, you know, we'll see where, where it goes from here as far as if we need to, to expand it, to make it bigger, to make the, uh, city safer. And I just want to say, everybody's entitled, everybody's entitled to their opinions, whether you respect it or not. But this is America, and anybody can express their opinion on how they feel about the, uh, this system or any other system. And that's what this council chambers is made for, to people to be able to come here and, and do that. So, and I respect everybody's opinion, may not agree with it, but I respect everybody's opinion. With that being said, workshop is over, and thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you all. Take care.